All right, we will call to order the regularly scheduled meeting for Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Cholo for Tuesday, February 26. Roll call shows all commissioners present. Invocation this evening will be done by Commissioner Adams, the pledge by Commissioner Behrens, if you will all please rise.
Our Father in Heaven, we are very grateful this day to meet together and to talk about our beautiful community in our wonderful town. We pray that Thy Spirit may be here as we discuss these things and be able to feel Thy presence, Father. We're grateful for the moisture we received and the filling of our lakes and reducing the fire danger, and we're grateful for all of our blessings, and we say these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, there is no carryover business, no old business, so we will proceed directly to new business, which, is that correct? Okay, which is going to be the election of officers. And I think...
I'm ready to discuss it.
All right, go ahead.
So the rules of procedure for the commission state that every year the commission votes to elect a chair and a vice chair. That typically took place in January of each year, or whenever the next meeting was after January. This year, we were planning on having it at our previous meeting, however, we did not have a full commission. We felt that it was probably more appropriate to have all seven here rather than five. So we put it on this agenda. What needs to be decided by the commission is, would you like to do the election this evening? Or would you prefer to wait until after March, which is when the council will appoint new commissioners? We have four commission seats that are up for reappointment. Of those four, two have indicated that they are not going to reapply. So come April, we will have two new commissioners. So the question to the commission is, do you want to go ahead and make the election tonight? And that then would move forward for the next calendar year? Or would you prefer to wait until we have the new commission member seated and have the election at that point? Mr. Chair, you just need a consensus from the commission and move forward one way or the other.
Adams, what's your vote?
I'd say we wait until March, until the new council.
I would agree.
Mr. Hudson?
I agree.
Mr. Bishop?
I agree.
Mr. Clark?
I'm not going to be the one dissenting.
Vice Chair Robertson?
I agree, let's wait.
And I do, as well.
So, under that, the current chair and vice chair would continue to serve through March with the election taking place, the first meeting with the commission following the reappointments.
Chairman, should, when we made the motion last time, was there anything in the minutes that would indicate that it was just for the one year? Do we need to like extend their terms so that that's sympathetic with...
There's nothing that I recall. Our attorney concurs, so.
I think you're just serving until you're reelected.
Can we ask who's not coming back? Is that appropriate at this time, since...
Yeah, certainly, our chair and also Mr. Hudson have both indicated that they are not going to reapply. We thank them for their service, and I'll be more verbose later, I'm sure.
Okay, on to the traditional agenda, which is public hearing in consideration of a zone change request submitted by Bill Halton of Creative Development LLC to rezone a portion of assessing parcel number 210-31-020K from C2, which is general commercial, to R1-15, which is single-family residential manufactured homes excluded, 15,000 square foot minimum lots, to allow for the construction of a single-family residence. Dissect the father.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Building permit 17230 was issued on October 3, 2015, to allow for the construction of 18-two-story short-term rental cabins on the subject property. The subject property is currently zoned C2, which is general commercial. The construction of cabins, of the rental cabins, is permitted use within the C2 zone. Applicant now wishes to build a single-family residence on the southwest side of the subject property. Single-family residences are not permitted in the C2 zone. The proposed lot size would be approximately 15,400 square feet. The applicant has indicated a 20-foot setback along the south side of the subject property. In order to build the single-family residence on the subject property, the applicant will be removing three of the proposed cabins, which include two units along the south side of the subject property, as well as eliminating a barbecue area and playground. In addition, the two cabins on the southeast of the subject property will only be one story tall and further reduce the units by two each for a total reduction of eight units on the subject property. The minimum lot size in the R115 zone is 15,000 square feet. The property adjacent to the southwest of the subject property is zoned R115. Along Meadowview Place, lots range from a minimum size of 16,117 square feet to a maximum of 87,991 square feet. The zoning of the subject properties includes, to the north, C2; to the south, R1-15 and C2; to the east, C2; and to the west, C2 and R1-15. The land uses of the surrounding properties includes, to the north, south, and west, single-family residential; and to the east, the Cholo Meadow. A neighborhood meeting was held by the applicant to explain the changes to area residence. Several neighborhood neighbors attended the meeting and had general questions about the project. Staff mailed letters and a subject property maps to all owners within 300 feet of the subject property and posted the property in accordance with state law. Staff did receive a comment from a neighbor who was concerned about lot size compatibility. However, no objections were received. After reviewing the standards for review, the City of Cholo zoning ordinance, discussions with the applicant, and because the request is consistent with the City of Cholo general plan, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission approves zone chain request 60503113 submitted by Bill Halton of Creative Development LLC to rezone a portion of 21031020K from C2, which is general commercial, to R1-15, which is single-family residential manufactured homes excluded, 15,000 square feet, and forward this approval to the city council, subject to the following recommendations. One, all development shall comply with all federal, state, and local requirements, including building permit requirements. Two, the minimum lot size for the residence shall be 15,000 square feet. Three, as shown on the proposed site plan, there should be a minimum 20-foot setback along the south side of the subject property. And four, the lot shall be split prior to the issuance of a building permit or residence. Staff, as well as the applicant, are available for any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. We'll begin as usual with the commission and questions for staff. Vice Chair Robertson?
Has there been any new concerns that has come in since this was printed?
No, the only concerns that we had are what are in the staff report. We did have a property owner who was actually here this evening. They are the ones that called with the concerns about lot size compatibility. However, no other phone calls were received.
Further questions for staff? All right, question?
Commissioner Adams? So it looks like there's some landscaping there. Is that required by landscaping? Who's in charge of that?
So, what we have on the overhead for you is the, what was the original site plan for the subject property? You can see over here on what would be the southwest side of this property, that there were three buildings, these commercial cabins, short-term rental cabins, that were being proposed for that area. As part of a commercial development, they would have to do landscaping, you know, those types of things. What they are now proposing is to remove that portion of the project from the subject property with about a little over a 15,000 square foot lot and put a single-family home on there. That single-family home would be under the R115 zoning requirements, which is a standard residential zoning district that we have here. There are no minimum landscape requirements for single-family homes, other than you got to comply with the property maintenance and buyer standards. So, other than just standard, what you would see for a single residential, there is no actual landscape requirement for the home if it were to be approved and constructed.
And what about the rest of this project?
The rest of the project, anywhere you have a street frontage, you are required to landscape. So they do have a landscaping plan that was approved for Meadowview Place, which is in compliance with our city C2 zoning. They're also going to be doing some landscaping down here along White Mountain Road as that project moves forward.
And they'll be maintaining that?
They are required to maintain by city code, yes.
Is one of these units shown on the overhead, the unit that is there now? And if so, can you indicate which one?
I can. This building right here, which is shown as building one, you can see there's a little blue asterisk next to it. That's the one that is currently under construction. That gives you a little bit of an idea of kind of how everything else ties in on the property.
Okay. Further questions for staff? All right, any questions for the applicant? Last call.
I do have, I do have a question, Ian.
Would the applicant please come forward and identify yourself for the record? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Bill Halton. Live at 2,000 North 43rd Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Halton. My question, and I know that the subject tonight isn't necessarily about the project, but could you help us understand what is, you know, how the project is progressing?
What's happening there?
Yeah.
Sure, it's understandable. We are, we built the existing cabin that's there with our own financing. We don't have any bank loans on it, what have you. So my partner and I, we also just built a string of homes out on 43rd Avenue. If you've been down there, those are the ones we just built. There's four of them in a row there that are new. And originally, we didn't plan on buying that property, but when we saw it for sale, we just felt like we needed to do something amazing with that property, and we will, we'll get there. But we were, already started those. In hindsight, we wish we would have just put that on hold and kept going with the cabins, but we built what we had there with monies that we had, and then we had to stop construction on that and put all our time and monies and attention into building those homes. And then we just finished, and we're putting the finishing touches now on some duplexes here in the middle of town on 9th Street. And we think we cleaned up that block a little bit. So we're just finishing that now. We need the snow to melt off. I think we're down to about a foot from the two-foot we got, and we'll be back up there. Obviously, the graffiti artists didn't help us any at all. But we'll go up there and rewrap that in Tyvek and get that project moving alongside of this new spec home we want to put up there. The reason for this zoning change is we feel like, you know, that south end of the property, we have more land than we probably need cabins. We've got enough cabins still going from, you know, the 18 down to wherever we end up. But we think the highest and best use for that south end would be to build a beautiful home up there with that same amazing view of the pristine meadows that we have. And also, we get to control the look on our south end. You know, that'll be next to our cabins, and we'll do a very attractive home there that I think you'll all approve of.
Mr. Adams?
So will all the homes that you build be similar to what you're planning or started there?
My goal for this particular lot is to build the most amazing house I've ever built, and complements that view and has a wraparound porch and will be a one-off in all of Cholo, that somebody will have the good fortune of owning for a long time. So it'd be a beautiful home up there. I wished you could see what's in my mind for even the cabins. There to be rustic stone and timber cabins that will be, I promise, a landmark for Cholo when it's done. I just got to get to that point, and getting that first one completed will be, you know, kind of a milestone for us as well, so that we can show people what we're trying to create there. And then when they see more going up, then they'll be excited for that. But we plan to light them up from that cliff below, face-light them, and when you round that corner, it won't be just big black dark meadow anymore. You'll see these beautiful rock and timbered cabins illuminated at night, and it ought to be a beautiful sight.
Thank you.
Further questions for the applicant? I need one more question for staff before we open for public comment. Is there a mechanism in place? Please don't take this negatively, but is there a mechanism in place as there were in some other areas for financial support if something were untoward, would occur to you or your plans?
You mean as far as a requirement of a bond or something like that? The City of Cholo does not have a bond requirement for commercial projects.
Okay, answers that question. Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
This is for Mr. Tregaskis. What's the, what is the timeline that the city has for, once you pull a building permit before you issue a CVO, is there a timeline that they have to meet? And are they abutting that? Are they getting up close to it? Or where are we at with that?
So, the timeline for a building permit is, once we issue the permit, you have six months to start construction. Once you've started construction, that permit essentially is valid for a period of six months, or until your next inspection, which then triggers the six months to start over. So, we have had residential projects that have been years in getting completed, you know, where the property owner is, you know, doing it just a little bit out of time, out of pocket, no loan, and it takes them quite a bit of time to get it done. As long as they are showing that progress moving forward, that permit is still valid. That would apply in the case of a residential construction as well. As long as you're showing that you have progress made, that you're calling in for inspections, that permit remains valid. So in this case, that building permit is still in effect and is still valid for that commercial cabin that's under construction.
How long is that for? As far as, when was the last inspection and when was that deadline, do you know?
I don't know. Katie, do you know?
I believe it was in October of last year, so they have approximately until April.
And what stage are they at as far as the construction? Are they electrical? I mean, Bill, you want to come back up and answer that?
So right now, we're at a framing inspection. We're ready to do a sheer nailing for, you know, that would be the next inspection, to get a sheer nailing inspection on the roof and the walls, and then we're, you know, we'd get the city's blessing to start putting siding on it. My goal now is to get the windows ordered and get the siding ordered, so that in the next three weeks, we can start getting those. Windows will probably take the longest, because we're not just putting in ordinary windows, so they have to be ordered. It'll take about three weeks to get in. And the siding, same thing, but we need to put the windows in before we put the siding on. But now that we're freeing up some cash, we can, we can do that. Our goal is to get the exterior completed, to where, you know, we're working inside, but that the shell is dried in and looks like a finished product.
And so, I guess this is for Justin. What happens if they don't meet that deadline? And what is the next mechanism that happens? I mean, is it just coming and pulling a brand-new permit at that point? Is that kind of what happens?
Usually, it's just a request for an extension, and that goes to our building official.
Okay.
We'll meet it.
Thanks.
We'll get an inspection next week.
Thank you, sir. Further questions for the applicant now that he's walked back to his seat? Okay, all right. Let's open it then for public commentary. Anybody in the audience this evening who would like to speak to this particular project is welcome to come forward and state your case at this time. Will you please come forward and identify yourself for the record?
My name is Kyle Thomas, and many of you I know. Some of them I know you a little better than others. Some of you are friends, and I appreciate that. Some of you I don't know.
Can you give us an address, please?
1200 Meadowview Place.
Thank you, sir.
Dear members of the commission, thank you for hearing me today. I'm a dentist by profession, and 10 years ago, I moved to Cholo to build, to buy and build a dental practice, to buy a home, to establish myself as a member of the Cholo community. I chose to move to Cholo, it didn't choose me, and I moved here because I wanted to be here. In that time, I sought out a place to be able to put down roots, participate in local church and community events, and own a home for my family, have some children, and raise that family there. I've lived at the very end of the street at 1200 Meadowview Place, the street on which Mr. Halton's project is being built for about five years, with my wife. And happily, we've welcomed a couple beautiful children into our home, Kinsley, who's three, and Grayson, who's one and a half. We chose to buy a home at the development of Meadowview Place for several reasons. One was the quiet, short, dead-end street that boasted a hidden and secluded feel despite being near the center of town. A place which we felt in the future would allow our children to have a sense of freedom, and we a sense of security, with so few neighbors and so little traffic up and down that street. A place where they could ride their bikes up and down the street and walk to a neighbor or friend's home without worry or concern or having to be accompanied. These things are what we feel a neighborhood community is about. Another aspect that attracted us to Meadowview were the large lots that were found on the street. Having grown up in a small town in southern Arizona on acre-plus lots, we enjoyed the space and the elbow room that was afforded at the Meadowview Development. And by those lots there, it's a welcome relief from the density developments in Phoenix, which we were glad to escape, where neighbors share driveways and are so densely packed together that they say hi to each other through their bedroom windows, which they really don't do that, because neighbors just don't say hi to each other down there. That's another reason why we wanted to come back to a small area. I know, because I live there and I experienced it. We're glad we chose Cholo and Meadowview Place as our home. Aside from the other benefits I've stated that I hope would come to fruition in the future, one of the greatest benefits is the neighbors that we have, one sitting here We can honestly say we have the best neighbors, willing to help each other out when needed, look out for others' homes when the neighbors are away, and most of all, they're just great and friendly people. Needless to say, we, along with other neighbors have, who have lived there for much longer than we have on the street, are invested in the long haul in Cholo and our home on Meadowview Place. In June of 2017, Mr. Halton and Baker bought the property located at 1501 Meadowview Place, property that's been described here. It had been vacant for many, many years. I don't have to detail where it is. Everybody in the whole White Mountains knows where it is, right? People used to ask me, "Where do you live?" And I would say, "Oh, I live in the street." And they said, "Oh, I don't know where that is." Now I just say, "It's by the half-built graffiti building that's been there for two years." And, "Oh, okay, yeah, we know where that is." Then they ask me, "What's the deal with that project?" And I say, "Your guess is as good as mine." Before I get into that a little bit, let me take you for a quick tour around Meadowview Place. We had the technical tour, the Planning Commission tour. I'm just going to kind of give my general tour of what I see there. So as you start at the bottom of the road, it's a single road, dead ends at my house, and comes back down, there's no other outlet. It's a single road, public road there. Starting at the bottom of the road, you have Lloyd and Ladine Reedhead. .78 acres is their lot size. You go up a little bit, the Boils have two properties, .67 acres, .38 acres. If you've ever driven up the street, this project has sat vacant, unsold for years since I've been there. Those two properties, because of the density that they were, the .38 acres, share a common driveway, which I think deters individuals from purchasing that property. They don't want to come up here. I don't want to come up here and share a driveway with someone like I did in Phoenix. The Simpsons, .67 acres. The Gritmans, .67 acres. There's another, these are all properties that have homes on them. There's another large property that is owned by the Reedheads. It's 2.52 acres that doesn't have a home on it. Martin Thomas and Julie, .96 acres. My home, .74 acres. The Monays, .65 acres. The Bertanes, .74 acres. The Fornos, 2.02 acres. The Hudson's, .68 acres. The Woods have two properties there, .63 acres, .89 acres. And the little dome house that sits there, I'm not quite sure who owns it. Fox Project Management was the one that was listed there, 1.29 acres. That's an average lot size on that street of .88 acres. I'm here to stand and speak for myself and other neighbors that I've spoken to on the street who couldn't be here for various reasons, that we oppose this rezoning. Why in the world, when there's an average lot size of .88 acres? Well, what I did, and let me explain, I took the high and the low of those two, averaged them out, and that's where I got that average from. I took out the lot that's two plus acres, that doesn't have a home, and I took out the small .38 acres, and I averaged the rest as an average .88 acres. So why are we wanting to carve out .35 acres on a street that averages .8 acres in the lot size? I shouldn't say rezone, it's just carving out a piece of a commercial property to build a spec home. A residence on an undersized lot that's going to sit beside, crammed up against a commercial project, in, you know, around it. If you've ever been up there, it's going to sit by itself right next to this project. Who does this benefit? Does this benefit the neighborhood or Cholo? No, it benefits Mr. Halton. And, you know, he claims in an interview that he gave, he wants to build this asset. He just said that tonight. He wants to build this thing that... He wants to build this thing that's going to glow when you walk coming around the meadow and whatnot. I don't know that people want that. I don't want that. I disagree with that. And really, this asset is going to be for his benefit and his benefit alone. This is the first time I've heard of a public hearing regarding this project. There was never anything posted until the sign went up for the rezoning. I never received a letter or 300 feet or whatever it was. Maybe I don't qualify because I'm at the end of the street. I don't know. But there was, there was never a public notice posted or a neighborhood meeting that was organized that, that, you know, how many people did I list there? 12, 14 people? I, I never heard of it. I never got a letter in the mail. I never got anything stuck on the door. No one ever knocked. So when this sign went up, I said, hey, here's my chance. Okay, I can voice my opinion. And I drive by that probably multiple times a day. I live at the end, I drive up and back at least twice a day, if not more. And so here we are today. I'm given a voice to speak my opinion about what's going on. Because literally we've had to live with the train wreck, no pun intended, if you've ever been up there and saw the train that was there for the last couple of years, just, you know, this project morphs from one thing to another. And all I can say is thank goodness that the train is gone and I hope you sold it for several millions of dollars because that's what it's going to take to complete this In a recent interview, Mr. Halton states from, from the White Mountain Independent, Sholo doesn't have anything where the whole family can rent a cabin. He seems very concerned about these customer families renting cabins, but seems to have forgotten about the real and actual families that live on Meadowview Place. He forgot or ignored that this is our home and our street and our investment in the future. When his project, project is done and completed and he's moved on to whatever the next one is, we, the residents of Meadowview Place, have to live in it. The Hudson's, the Monays, the Simpsons, the Reedheads, the Gritmans and the rest of us. What type of traffic increase you think is going to take, go up and down that dead end street as construction proceeds? And thereafter, 12 cabins are crammed onto one acre there. And, and now cramming another home in there with that project next to it. I'm going to say, sign me up. I want to buy that house, right? Not in a hundred years would I buy that house next to that project. The density is ridiculous and idiotic and completely inconsistent with what has already been established there and platted out for 50 years. Mr. Halton wants his cake and eat it too. He wants to build a commercial project, but when there are no funds, he wants to carve out the smallest possible residential lot to build a spec home to try and fund the commercial That he has, doesn't have the funds is obvious. Otherwise he wouldn't let it sit in the rain and snow with no, no windows, no roofing for the last two years and not done anything with it. No reasonable builder who had a plan or funding would ever approach a project in this manner or leave a project in this state for this amount of time. The promises that are continually made and parroted to others seem to be a lot of hot air, in my opinion, from Mr. Halton. For example, in the interview given in the independent, he states, about this time next week, we'll be back up here rewrapping to get rid of the graffiti. Well, that was the beginning of February and here we are at the end. So I guess of spray painting over the graffiti and leaving, leaving it there as is, is rewrapping, then he kept his promise. But the truth is, I have a feeling that it's not going to go as planned and it's not going to be rewrapped. It's not going to progress, is it? It's going to continue to fumble along because the funds aren't there. That's the reason for this rezoning, to build a spec home, to sell the spec home, to fund the, fund more of the project, to build another cabin. Even admits in the article that they're looking for investors to build this. It's kind of a pie in the sky project. So I ask if we're going to continue to watch this project fumble along the next decade or two decades? Or is there a more reasonable approach? I'm not anti-building. I'm not anti-progress. I'm not anti-growth. As a matter of fact, I'm very much a capitalist and, but I'm a capitalist who supports a logical, planned, reasonable approach to doing things. One that involves all parties affected to reach an outcome that is acceptable to and benefits all parties involved. Not the plan that gets invented and reinvented as the money ebbs and flows and as one changes the plan solely for their own profit and gain. Mr. Halton said in the interview for the independent, we intend this to be an asset to the city of Sholo. Let's be truthful. He wants it to be his asset. Rightfully so. If you're going to invest in something and want it to be yours. But it needs to be an asset to the city of Sholo. It needs to be an asset to the residents on that street. I stated that I oppose the current carving out zoning proposition, but in reality, I'm all for rezoning that. Rezoning the entire piece residential, or at least rezone this piece to what is consistent with what's in the neighborhood, as I've stated previously, a size, density that's consistent with the neighborhood. If his burning desire is to rezone and build spec homes, and that's what he's good at doing at, that's what he's done in the past, then rezone the entire property and build spec, build a few spec homes on there. Beautiful properties, right? Overlooking the meadow, the entire 1.43 acres. Zone it into 2.7 acres, larger residential lots, built with a couple of beautiful homes that overlook the meadow where families can live and enjoy the neighborhood. Create an asset to the families on Meadowview Place and the community of Sholo. This is what makes sense and I encourage members of the commission to do the right thing and consider this and oppose this rezoning proposal and ask Mr. Halton to reconsider the proposed plan for the smart, for this small parcel of land before it becomes another convoluted construction project in Sholo. So I ask you to do the right thing. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
I have a question.
Yes.
So the current plan.
Your hair color.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So the current plan that he, he has, I'm sorry, the previous plan.
Yes.
Without the residential piece, has three more cabins on it and a play yard, barbecue, whatever thing. So what were your feelings about that? And how would, how is the, what is the difference for you and your family if there were three more cabins there as opposed to a residential home?
Well, I don't, I don't think it's going to make a difference if there's 12 rentals or there's 15 rentals. I mean, it's going to affect the, it's going to affect the flow of the traffic on the street. I have, the amount of traffic that increased and after the project took place was substantial. It drove up that street, they turn around in the cul-de-sac, many of them turn around in my front yard because there's no gate or anything there and that cul-de-sac is pretty small and they kind of make a loop through my yard and they think somebody's coming in and they, and I don't even know because I'm not there most of the time, the times I see in the evening. You know, if there was a, you know, some other things in the project that could have been beneficial, then now they're removed. They have a playground, there's kids that live on the street, Hudson's kids. My kids are little, but they won't be forever. The Monays that live next to me have small children. And so, so from the beginning, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me if there's 12 or 15 or whatever. It's, you know, that density just seems crazy for that area. I mean, if you've ever gone up to that piece of property, it's not very wide. From the road to where it goes out to the edge and then it just drops straight off. There's, there's no other access to there and I don't think there could be an access built to there because it dead ends. There's no way that it could be built from the White Mountain up to, into that project and be separate from the residential road. I just, I think you'd have to carry it, go from road all the way to the, to the other road. And I don't think that's the plan is to build that. It's just to use the residential road as, as access.
So are you, so are you objecting to the whole plan in its entirety or the fact that he wants to pull a piece off for residential?
Well, I'm, I'm objecting to, to the point three zone, acre zoning in an area where the average lot size is point eight, eight. So i- if he wants to build a residence there, fine, build a residence. Put it on a bigger, put it on a bigger lot. Put it on a lot that's consistent with what's in the area. Am I happy about the project? No, I'm not happy about the project, but I'm even less happy when there's a project and then it's going to carve out just this little tiny piece to build a spec home to profit so that maybe then they can build the cabin. That's, that's from what individuals I've talked to, that's the plan. And so here you have a project that doesn't have the funding. It's this, I mean, what's, what's this project going to cost? Millions of dollars to build these things. And there's not even enough funding to build one, to complete one. And so now we're going to try and raise capital to build the one. And even in this article in the, in the White Mountain Independent, he states, I'm looking, we're looking for investors for the other cabins that are going to be built one at a time. Well, how many years is that going to take? I don't know, maybe it doesn't matter. He said, project's gone for a long time, but, but, but that project's been sitting there for two years. I would say that's half-built. It's not even close to half-built, year and a half at least, that that project's been sitting there.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Were you aware of the fact when you bought your house, that you were abutting commercial property?
Well, mine doesn't abut the, that property. I'm, I'm at the end, but yes, I was, I wasn't aware that it was a commercial property there until later. I, I guess I had no reason to inquire. It just seemed like an empty lot sitting there that I seen was part of the neighborhood.
The only reason that I bring it up is that, you know, to use another, I guess, another analogy, is that there's a lot of people that want, when they, when they move up here and say, I'm buying this place because there's nothing around it or because it backs national forests or, or, or.
Yeah, yeah.
But that doesn't mean that it stays that way in perpetuity. And I did, that's what, and I'm not, I'm just asking if you had advanced knowledge of the fact that at some point or another, a viable commercial project could be built in there irrespective of what it was.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't have any knowledge of that. I didn't have any reason to really research that, I guess.
Okay.
And until later, when there was, there was a listing that was put up there and, and I did call the individual to see what, you know, what it was. They said, oh, it's zoned commercial. I said, okay, no idea that that was the case, but, you know, and I understand it's right there on the, you know, I'm, I'm not oblivious to the fact of kind of how small towns evolve, right? I mean, generally they're residential areas and as they grow, there needs to be space for commercial enterprises. And so you take, you know, all these different houses along the way that are, that are, you know, restaurants and other things or that have been raised and something else has been built in that place, you know? I'm not oblivious to, you know, to that, to that fact that these former residential lots become commercial lots according to some sort of plan that the city has laid out for them. So, but if, you know, looking at that, you know, I, I don't understand why this particular lot was, was zoned commercial. I, I just don't. It doesn't make any sense with, with what's there and, and the access that's there.
Well, we, that's the, the subject for another meeting, I, I'm sure, but Commissioner Bishop.
I have a couple of questions for staff. That's appropriate.
You may sit, please.
Thank you.
Thank you and thank you for coming up. We appreciate it.
Director Dragaskis, could you tell me how long that property's been zoned commercial?
It's similar to the previous meeting. That is, that is the original zoning for that property.
Okay. So quite some time.
Yeah, approximately 40 years.
And I just want to clarify, the focus that we have tonight is on the rezoning for residential, but nothing about the commercial property and the project that's going on for commercial purposes at this point in time?
The primary focus is on the, the portion of the property being requested to be rezoned, which is the resident, would be the residential portion. Obviously because it is a portion of this commercial property, there, there's, there's going to be some discussion about the property in general, but the primary focus should be on the portion to be rezoned.
Okay. And then Dr. Thomas mentioned that he didn't receive a letter about the neighborhood meeting. Is that because he was beyond the 300 feet or?
Yeah, I'll go back to the aerial. So you can see this is the subject property outlined in red. That is where we picked the 300 feet from. You can see the blue portion right here. That's our best guess as to where the, the property in question, the portion of the property is. It's not 100%, but that property is about 100 feet wide and about 150 feet deep. So twice or three times this distance would be about the 300 foot mark. That's about where my arrow is here. Mr. Thomas lives down here, well outside the 300 foot distance, which is why we post the property as well, besides just sending out the letter.
And thank you. And my last question kind of focuses on Dr. Thomas's point about the average lot size in that neighborhood that surrounds this property being so much more significant in size than the, the portion that's being requested to be rezoned at about a third of an acre. It does appear that rezoning something to be residential at that size is different, quite a bit different than the other properties that are already in that area for residential. It's about, it's about half the size or less. Is that normal to, when we rezone something, to try and make it compatible with what it's abutting up next to, to try and make those lots the same size if they're residential, to try and make, make sure there's consistency there?
It's certainly a consideration that can be made. When we look at something, we look at what is the underlying zoning. As an example, if this was zoned R17, you know, as an example, that would require a minimum of a 7,000 square foot lot. When you purchase property, part of the protections you have is what is the underlying zoning? That establishes what the minimum criteria for that area is. Unless you're in an established subdivision, so for example, Sierra Pines, part of Sierra Pines is zoned AR43X, which is a 43,000 square foot minimum lot size. Part of it is zoned R120, which is a 20,000 square foot minimum lot size. Because that is a subdivision with a recorded flat, there are certain protections that go in with buying a property in a recorded subdivision. You know what all the lot sizes are going to be. In the case of an unrecorded development or just, you know, something that's just kind of happened over time, your protection falls down to what's the underlying zoning. So in this case, you know, fortunately it's a minimum of 15,000 square feet and not 7,000 square feet or 5,000 square feet. The neighbors have that protection. But it's not necessarily a guarantee that just because my lot is a certain size and my neighbor's lot is a certain size, that all the lots in the neighborhood will continue to be a certain size. Unless you are at the zoning minimums, there's always that option that's, or that, maybe not option, but there's always that possibility that somebody's going to come in and say, I'm allowed to do a lot size smaller than this, I'm going to put it in at the minimum. An example of that would be as you go north on Central Avenue, north of Old Um, an example of that would be as you go north on Central Avenue, um, north of Old Lynn and Road, most of those homes in there are on fairly large lots. That's a 7,000 square foot minimum lot size. Uh, individual bought one lot that was 15,000 square feet and split it into two and built two homes on them. That's what the underlying zoning allowed. So, uh, in this case, you have a neighborhood that was developed primarily with larger lots. There is one in there that's about 16,000 and some change. Um, but most of them are a lot larger. Uh, what the applicant is requesting is to come in and build to the underlying, to the same underlying zoning as what the neighbors have with the minimum size, lot size that would be allowed by the zoning.
So that the zoning would be consistent between those, um, parcels, but not necessarily the size that they were established in?
That is correct. Yeah, they would.
Consistent zoning?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Um, I, this is just a follow-up from Mr. Bishop, from Commissioner Bishop's question to Mr. Tregaskis. So if we, if for some reason this, this zoning isn't, uh, doesn't occur, and what we're looking at is then the, the original project is three buildings that would be there, um, that was originally submitted to the city back in 2017. Is that correct?
Yeah, and, and this is why from a staff perspective, we've kind of struggled with this one, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Um, you have a piece of property that's zoned commercial. Uh, the development that is being proposed and is, uh, currently started is a permitted use. Um, a whole, we, we consider this to be the same as a hotel or a motel. Um, anywhere in town, you want to put a motel or a hotel on a piece of C2 zone property, you don't have to do a public meeting. You don't have to notify the neighbors. Uh, you don't have to send out letters. You don't have to put notes on their door. Uh, you come in, you meet with staff, you submit the required plans, you get a building permit, you move forward. In this case, what the applicant is requesting, and, and this is typically backwards. Um, normally people say, I want to take something that's residential and make it commercial, and I'm going to infringe into an existing neighborhood. Um, what is being requested at this point is I have a piece of commercial, um, I have an approved plan, I could move forward, but rather than do that, I want to actually reduce the number of units that I'm going to build. And instead of infringing into the residential by asking for a zone change on a residential piece, I'm going to remove a portion of the property and make it residential, which means I actually have a, a greater buffer between me and the neighborhood than what I did to begin with. Um, I'm also, he's also proposing to reduce the total number of units, uh, by almost 25%. Again, that's not something that normally would come to the commission. Um, typically the commission would see somebody coming in and saying, I want to increase this. So it really, it, it's, uh, it's an interesting situation that staff and now the commission is being put in is, um, do you, uh, what it boils down to is, do you grant the request and allow us a lot that is, in some cases substantially smaller than what is already there on the neighborhood, but it's a residential lot, which would reduce the impact of the commercial project on the residential neighborhood? Or do you deny the zone change and allow that project to move forward as it was originally plotted or originally proposed with the higher number of units and closer to the existing neighbors? That's essentially what it boils down to.
And because we didn't, because this was already a permitted use, this never had to have a public hearing or anything like that. And I'd imagine Kyle would be here if two years ago, this project would have came before us, she would have been saying, I don't want any of this density in here because we're, it's a residential area and this surely shouldn't be in a residential area. That a safe assumption?
No.
You know, when you, uh, when you set about to do something like this, where at the beginning of a residential street, that's the only street that goes up into a little tiny neighborhood, even if it's not required to have a hearing, uh, to notify neighbors, it's just the right thing to do. It's the right thing to do to go and, and, and have a public meeting and say, this is what I want to do. What's the input? Why don't you do that? Because you're going to get pushback. That's what's going to happen. And, uh, and so, uh, so, you know, we, we had no idea what was going on there. I stopped one time, talked to, uh, a young man that was working there, uh, and he was building this structure and it kind of looked like a train car. So that kind of concerns me is they're going to build a train car here in this, at the beginning of this neighborhood. Uh, and I asked him and he said, well, we're going to build 15 of these. And I said, like that? Like a train car? And, uh, and he said, oh, don't worry, we're going to do this and it's going to look real nice. Well, then somewhere along the line, that got scrapped. I, I don't know what, what the plan was with the train car, but it disappeared one day and disappeared after that other structure that's there now was built. But, uh, but my point is, is that, you know, the right thing to do is, is talk to the neighborhood when you're plunking a commercial project right in the, right in the midst of, of a small little neighborhood. Um, Mr. Hudson's my neighbor. He knows the neighborhood. Um, he knows how many people live there. There's not very many people live there, uh, just a dozen or so, uh, homes and, and families. Some of them, uh, maybe one or two, one or two are kind of vacation homes, but have been there for a long time, since the seventies or eighties. Um, but, uh, but that's my point is, you know, you come into a small area, the thing to do is, is, uh, is be neighbor friendly, be friendly to the neighborhood, have a, have a meeting, talk about what's going on, not two years down the road when a, the project has started, is half built, has sat there. Nobody knows what's going on. You have to stop and ask people and, and maybe it's been heard here. I don't know. You know, I, I have no idea until there was an actual this hearing where you could voice your opinion about what was exactly going to go on there.
I think that, uh, I think it's a bad idea to put something that dense in there. That's just my opinion. And that's opinion of one person. Thank you.
Further questions for, uh, the applicant? You want him to come back up?
Yeah.
Okay, the app, all right.
I've got a couple of thoughts myself.
Okay. Um, you said, it said in our packet that you did have a neighborhood meeting. How did you notify the residents and, and did you notify everybody that was on that street or tried to?
Just for a little historical benefit, I've never met you before. I think you've been just a little rough for never meeting me or talking to me, uh, on me and my project. But if I know where you live, I used to own that lot on Meadowview because it is a beautiful little road. I wanted to live there. I owned that lot at the end of the cul-de-sac. I'm friends with Rick Forneau. We built Old Town Square together where Pizza Factory is, and I helped Rick build his house. Uh, I've spent so much time on Meadowview Place, I don't, I know it very well. That's why I knew what this property could be. Um, I chose the cabins because I thought it was a much softer blending approach to the residents that live up there, some which are already my friends, than a strip mall with a Subway and a hair salon, um, which very well could have gone in there. So I felt these cabins would be a much softer approach than as, uh, Mr. Tregaskis described, it is absolutely backwards for a developer to come in and ask to lower his density and to kind of go backwards. But again, it puts, he may not want to buy this home, but I guarantee you, somebody's going to love it, uh, because it's going to be very unique and it's going to be beautiful. And if you know where this is situated from that south side of our property, it just goes straight uphill to that dome that sits on the top of the hill. There's lots of land between there. Nobody sees property lines and what have you. It's going to look just as, you know, I can appreciate that, you know, how much land Lloyd has there and, and others have, but even Rick's property, he may have two acres, but he, he only can use, you know, he's got a 16 foot basement because it drops off like a rock. It's unusable land. So, um, and for historical, I haven't owned the property for two years. Took me four months just to get a building permit. So yes, we've been under construction for a year, just a little over. I didn't ask for any graffiti, but we're going to get it dolled up. And any project I've ever built in this town, I don't know of anybody that tries harder to make something that enhances the town and community, whether it's residential or commercial. I built the three medical buildings up by the hospital that are brick, uh, across from Walmart and behind the hospital there where Doc Moffett used to be and the VA Hospital. Uh, if it has, uh, used brick or new used brick on it in this town, I'd probably be built it. We try really hard to make things attractive from the road. This one will be, this is my retirement property. If I got to build it one cabin at a time, so be it. We'll do it, but it'll get built. And he's absolutely right. I'm really good at building a, an attractive spec home that we'll sell. And we'll sell one and we will use the proceeds from that to help us build more cabins and move the project forward. That's what you do. But I've spent an awful lot of money to buy that property and to maintain it and support it every month. So we're dealing with that asset the best we can.
Okay. My original question was about the, the neighborhood meeting.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So can you, uh, address that point?
Well, we had a neighborhood meeting for this zoning. Uh, Mr. Thompson didn't show up for that, but of course he wasn't notified.
Notify, uh,
Well, we followed, we followed the city's approach. By the way, I, I used to be a planning zoning commissioner in Cholo. So we notify 300 feet and in all directions around the subject property. And that's what we did, of course.
So that's, okay. I, I wanted to find out if you had posted anything or if you, if you had mailed within the 300.
But in the time I've owned it, I, he never stopped and talked to me. I would, I love talking about the project. We're excited about the project. If I had deeper pockets, it'd be done, but we're a small company, struggling hard, but we're doing our best.
Thank you very much.
You're really welcome.
I have a question for the applicant.
Commissioner Bishop.
So I guess my question is, you're, you're requesting that this property re, rezone a portion of it from commercial to residential. Um, so why is it that you're requesting that a portion be residential? Why not make the whole thing residential?
Well, first of all, because we have a plan to build these, um, these, uh, short-stay cabins there as a commercial project. We bought, we paid commercial, you know, pricing for the land and we, we intend to build a commercial project there. If we don't obtain the zoning for any reason, I can't, it amazes me that anybody would have any problem with it because again, it's going the other way that it would normally go. We're either going to build three cabins there or we're going to build a beautiful home there, uh, which further isolates, which another family there that will have their own decision to make if they want to live next door to our cabins, but we're going to build beautiful cabins. I bet they do.
And that's kind of the heart of my question. You've got 15 approved. You want to do less, which doesn't really seem to make sense. I mean, and it maybe alluded to it earlier, are you changing the zoning or requesting a change to the zoning, taking three houses out so you can potentially put a house in there and sell it, where you can raise money to build?
Yeah, that's intent. Originally there was 18 cabins approved. We'll change that number to three less and taking some to single story instead of two stories. So overall, there's eight units less than we would have built that we're already approved to build. So, but yes, the intent would be to take that southern portion of the land and build another home there. Quite honestly, it, it's a buffer for us as well, but we think it, at this point, it makes sense and it will help us move the project forward, which is what everybody wants.
It's a fundraising, it's a fundraising purpose, huh?
Oh, and if I could, Brent, just before you get started, residential financing is a lot easier to obtain than commercial lending. So a spec home there is a lot easier for us to fund and, and get done and, and get sold and, and move the project forward. Just wanted to share that.
So Bill, when, when did you guys change the, I guess, when did this idea come about to build this home? Like, when did you guys think of it?
Well, anytime you're spending your dang money every month supporting the commercial land payment, every month that we go and, and you're not moving forward, you, you have to sit back and reevaluate and figure out, how do we move forward? What can we do? And so it dawned on me, well, one way to do it would be to build a spec house. We just built the ones out on 43rd Avenue and sold every one of them in the construction stage. They're attractive, they're different, they're unique and people have responded well to them. So we feel like we've got a little bit of a talent for that and we do it up here, we can get that one sold and between the land that it sits on and the profit from building the home, we'll be able to basically pay for the land. So we pay for the commercial land, now we can focus on the buildings without, you know, throwing money at the land every month.
So when did that happen? Do you remember what month it was or what time? What, where were you at in the project when you thought of this, the, the concept to do this?
I mean, probably, I mean, we just talked about it for like the last 90 days to, to make the application and, and get on, you know, have our neighborhood meeting, get on the agenda.
Further questions for the applicant? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the public that would like to come forward, please?
Yeah, my name is Marvin Peterson. I go by Pete. I, I have a, 20 North White Mountain Road is kind of what I, where I have a, a house there and then I have a, an office there.
What, what?
20 North White Mountain Road.
20 North, thank you, sir.
So I've got a totally different angle on this and I'm sure I'm at the wrong party. Okay, but I'm going to tell you my angle on this. Here's the, this is where I struggle with this is, um, do we know we have a problem with traffic already, this commercial property? We not have a problem. I, I know this has already been approved. I'm, again, I'm a totally late to the party, but if you know much about how the traffic goes, and I drive a lot, mobile computer service, so I drive around a lot. We're, um, we're asking to put this on a residential street and we already have enough problem. Maybe, how many people have seen the, the ambulances stacked up on White Mountain Road? It's a serious concern. I was coming to talk about, I wanted to make sure that we're going to put a light there. Okay? That, that was a concern. So this residential property, as I've listened to this whole thing that we're carving it out for somebody to get funding, this is just, um, that's a whole different question. That doesn't make any logical sense. If I own the property across the street, would you allow me to cut it out and put a residential house there? The answer's no, you wouldn't. But mine was more from a safety perspective and that was my only concern because we have this growing, we have a growing community. We've all wanted to grow. When the community goes, I make more money. More people come, I'm all good with that. I've seen the homes you've built. You make beautiful homes, Mr. Holman. So I compliment that, but like for me, um, this is the concerns that I have is that, and I know it's at the wrong meeting, is there a plan to put a light there? I'll bet there's not.
That's an A dot highway. They have no plans at this time to put a light there.
Okay, so, but don't they make decisions based on what the planning is and do you guys communicate with them? Yes or no?
Uh, they have regional plans, which we have input, long-range plans. They have no, no intent of putting a light there.
So I know this is, I'm, I'm, again, I'm at the wrong party, guys. Do you see why I'm here? I'm here for a different reason. If you've ever sat in line, okay, and so my medical life has changed a lot in the last twelve year, 12 months, okay? And I stack up and when I have an emergency, we already have enough problems there. So you see why I'm here, which is kind of dumb, but it's even dumber to me to hear what I do. This would never occur in Mesa. This would never occur in Phoenix. They wouldn't cut out a, a piece of residential lot. That's crazy. We're going to go cut this out? Can I own the property across, buy it back a piece from the city? Can I build a house right there in the open middle field? The answer's no. Okay? That's not logical. And again, this isn't trying to be against Mr. Holman. I'm just concerned about, I feel like we have a growing safety problem. If anybody knows anything about the city, we have a growing safety problem and it has to do with that road. So does that make sense? So I don't look totally, see, but someone nod their head, but that is the reason, okay? That I'm primarily here. I happen to have had customers that lived in the house he lives in ever since it was built and up and down that road. And then as I, just in my own opinion, after coming about this other subject, I'll tell you, why are, why does suddenly that business get an opportunity, that commercial property get to use the residential lane? Why do they get to, why do they get public? That road is so narrow. You know how many times I've been down that? Can you imagine? Would you ever been down there and it's snowy? I have. I have. It's going to be a mess.
Right there right now.
So that's my concern again, it's all about safety, and then what happens if people go sliding down there? We got all these commercial people who are coming to visit. By the way, if it does go in, I'll probably rent them, just so you know, don't get, don't take that wrong. So I don't, I'm not totally against it. It's a great place right in town where you could rent. But the concern again is what? Is what's the safety factor in this? And it says it's no big deal? It is a big deal. Okay? Because I've sat in traffic as ambulances, traffic's just jammed, and they sit there waiting for eventually something to clear. And like, and public safety is part of the responsibility in planning and zoning, in my opinion. So that, those are a couple of my kind of crazy approaches to this. This is why I came, is I looked at this. I didn't know, thank you for teaching me about commercial property. You have a commercial property, you can do whatever you want. But why is this not different? That why didn't this go public the other way? Because it's on a residential street. Commercial property is from the front. Why did that get approved in the first place without consideration of, of traffic to flow? This is my last thing. This came to me in the meeting. Okay? What happens if, um, can you, Mr., you can tell me, on these properties, are the, what are they, they're like a kitchen and everything?
It's a hotel suite.
Right. It looks two stories, right, obviously?
Pardon me?
It has two stories?
Stories.
Right. So the concern that I have, this is going to be like, so this would be kind of like a B and B kind of thing, right? You come and go.
More of a hotel, like Hampton.
Okay.
Lit up at night.
The concern I have with this project is this. And, and, and I know I came for a different reason. As long as it's, there, there's some type of guarantee that they don't take those double buildings and split them in half and put a kitchen on the top and the bottom, and then you go from 15 to 30? That's the only concern I come away from a different perspective on that, because of the same reason I'm talking about. And that could be done, right? Couldn't it? Am I wrong?
So. As permitted, the, uh, units are two-story. There's one unit on the bottom, there's one unit on the top, there are no kitchens in either unit. So each building is comprised of two units.
So is this really 30 units, right, then?
That, that's why we're saying with the three units, that they're, the three buildings that they're proposing to get rid of, plus the two buildings that they're proposing to build as a single-story rather than a two-story, that's a reduction of eight total units.
I get it. So, so, and that's because of, again, so I didn't, again, I didn't know, I had no idea what they were. I figured you're going to put a kitchen in the house if you're going to sell it. Okay. That's, anyhow, thank you. I'm sorry I came to the wrong meeting. Thanks.
Thank you for your input, we appreciate it. All right. Any additional questions before I close? Any additional questions for, any additional input from the public? Any, any more questions for members of the public or the applicant?
Can we have some conversation amongst the group?
Yes. Um, yeah, yeah, yeah. Hang on, I want to, I do, I then, at this point, I'll close the public portion of the meeting and bring it back for discussion, uh, with, uh, the commission and staff.
So I think what it boils down to is we've got a couple of different concerns that have been expressed. One is, um, the desire not to rezone a portion of it. Um, and then we also have some kind of traffic concerns as well about the number of units. I can understand the concerns about rezoning a portion of it and having that parcel size be smaller than the surrounding residential, but there seems to be some benefit to reduce the number of units there, to reduce the amount of commercial traffic on that road. And I think that's what we have to kind of figure out, is which one is better for the city of Cholo. Am I kind of summarizing the concerns that we've kind of heard? I mean, it's down to those two things.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the impact of the neighborhood, I think that's one of the things that we take into consideration, is this is a dead-end road. That kind of brings me up to one more question I have, is this, um, Justin, is this going to access, uh, this lot, going to access Meadowview Place directly, or is it going to access Meadowview Place through the, uh, the commercial project?
Oh, yeah, I see that.
Um, no, it would access directly off of Meadowview Place. It would have its own private driveway, just like any other single-family residential would.
And if it doesn't, if we don't, if, if the zoning doesn't go through, and it's the way the project is already kind of in, uh, the stages right now, those three buildings would access through, um, through the parking lot?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and really, when you look at the topography, um, you know, Meadowview Place is a public street.
Yeah.
Um, there is no practical access off of White Mountain Road. The only practical access for this property, whether it was commercial or residential, would be off of Meadowview Place. For, um, I guess, just kind of background information for the commission, typically when we look at traffic counts for residential properties, uh, we use a number of 10 trips per day. Now, that sounds like a lot, but that means every time you leave your driveway is one trip, every time you enter your driveway is a separate trip. So you run, you drop your kids off at school, and you come back, that actually counts as two trips. So five round trips essentially is what that boils down to. Um, we don't have a, a trip count for like hotels, motels, rental-type units such as this. What we have found is typically with the hotels and motels, you have two kind of peak waves of traffic. In the morning, when people get up, and now they're off to wherever their destination was, uh, and in the evening when they come back. You don't typically have that multiple-trip, um, status that you do with a single-family home. You don't leave your hotel room, come back to your hotel room, leave your hotel room, and do that five times during the day, typically. I think most of us, just with our experience, would probably say, when I stay at a hotel, I'm either there or I'm gone. I'm not going back and forth. We would expect that the trip count for this type of commercial development would be less than what they typically would be for a standard commercial strip mall-type development. You're not going to have that traffic coming in and out all day typically like you would with a strip mall. You're not going to have the lunch crowd coming in and getting the subway. You're not going to have the, uh, the hair crowd coming in, you know, every 15 minutes for their appointment throughout the day. Typically tends to be a group in the morning, a group in the evening, obviously with some other incidental traffic during the day. Um, so with the traffic, um, building the new home, you're going to add about those 10 trips per day for that new home. You will also add some trips for the commercial, obviously. The benefit here is that the property is on the entrance side of Meadowview Place rather than the opposite back end of Meadowview Place. Again, people are probably going to come in, are you going to get some loopy-loos through the neighborhood? I'm sure you will. I mean, that just happens. I get them on my street, and I don't live anywhere near a commercial neighborhood or project. Um, anytime you see growth, are you going to see impacts on the neighborhood? Yes, you are. That, that's just the nature of how things go. So with the traffic, um, also, I just want to address a comment that was made. With commercial, you can't just do anything you want. Um, you know, you do have to fit the zoning code, you do have to fit the requirements, there's a specific list of things you can do. If you don't meet that list, you can't do it. So I, I just kind of wanted to address that notion that commercial was kind of a free-for-all zone. That's not the case, but... So I, I hope that answered the question as it was presented. If not, I can clarify.
Other questions for staff?
Director Trigaskis, this pertains to the project and in relation to, you know, what we're addressing here. Would the CFOs be issued per building on the existing project? Or would the, the whole project have to be completed before a CFO would be issued?
So the answer to both questions is yes.
Okay.
The, the infrastructure that is required for the project, parking lot, drainage, um, those types of things, those are required before you can get the CFO. Um, but each building could be, and, and in fact is permitted separately. So Building 1, come in, you've got all the infrastructure, the parking lot, everything done. Building 1 is done, you can get a CFO on Building 1. Um, Building 2 could then be under construction. When that one's done, you get a CFO on Building 2. But you can't get a CFO until the required infrastructure is in place.
Anything further? All right. And, uh, let's, uh, entertain a motion, uh, to approve or an alternative motion. I guess we need to discuss, to, to work with what we're given first, correct?
Um, yeah, essentially, uh, the commission has the option, uh, to make, uh, I guess, three different recommendations to the council. One would be just a straight approval. One would be approval with recommendations. Uh, the third would be a recommendation of denial. So, uh, that's the options for the commission this evening.
I'll write you off with those three in front of us. All right, then I'll make a motion. I move to recommend approval of zone change request 605-03-113, submitted by Bill Haltem of Creative Development LLC, to rezone a portion of, uh, Cessar's parcel number 210-31-020K from C2 General Commercial to R1-15, which is single-family residential manufactured homes excluded, 15,000 square feet lot minimum, to allow for the construction of a single-family residence, subject to staff recommendations, and forward this to the city council. So there is a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Adams. Uh, all those in favor, please see?
Actually, is, I mean, now that we have a second, we can have a little further discussion, correct?
Uh, yes, we, we sure can.
So, um, would we, uh, put a stipulation on it, maybe that at least the first building were to get finished? Um, and maybe a condition of the zoning so that we don't potentially have another, um, you know, I think there was some concern about the, about a structure, uh, you know, being...
Interesting that you would say that, because I, that was something that I was going, however the motion proceeded, something that I was going to suggest to Mr. Haltem, based on comments that I have had from fellow community members, not with staff members.
So, I'm, I'm sorry to clarify that before we would allow the residential portion to be separated off, you'd have to have at least one building completed?
I don't know. Can we do that? As we're taught, we, this is, my understanding is, we, we deal with a single-family issue, period. And can we attach stipulations to the commercial side as a, as a, as a condition of what we're doing with the residential side?
I don't think you can do that when it's a permitted use already there.
So all I'm thinking of is if you did that, you, you say you had a reversionary clause on this, right? And you said that if a CFO is not issued within 24 months, then it reverts back to C2, and then he would be able to go forward with those other three buildings to what it's already been approved for. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, so I don't know that we gain any advantage by doing a stipulation on a CFO, because that you're, you're not dealing with like, this was a conditional use permit, then we would pull that, and then the project would not be able to do there. But when you're putting a reversionary clause on a zoning issue, it really is, it's, I don't know if that, that works, if that's going to accomplish what we're going to do, what we want to, we want to have happen.
Right.
Further discussion before we take a vote, and bear in mind, this, you know, we, we don't know how the vote's going to turn out at this particular point, so all, we, we have a motion and a second.
I, I guess I'd, I'd like to say something, just because I, I feel like I'm torn with this project, right? Because it's like, we have a project that, and, and, you know, Mr. Holton's indicated that it, he hasn't been a part of this project, but, since the onset of it, but at the same time, we see a building sitting there, every time we drive past has graffiti on it, and so it's hard to get past, you know, that this project might not sit, might sit there and languish, right? I think that's one of our, the concern of most of us, is it's like if we have a, you know, more buildings just sitting there that are kind of an eyesore on our meadow, which I think everybody in here would say, the city of Cholo is taking great strides to protect that meadow. I mean, they've bought up several, eight, hundreds of acres in there. I know the Cholo Bluff, the development there has donated a significant portion to kind of keep a buffer so that the bluff looks beautiful, and, and to have that there, it creates an eyesore. But at the same time, we have the ability to lessen the density so that there's less of an impact on the residential. And so it's kind of like, it's hard.
I, I agree.
It's a hard decision for me, so it's...
I, I, I agree. I don't, given that scenario, we have a decision to make. So, and it's still open for discussion, so...
So from my calculations, it looks like the, the house that's going to be on this property is going to be a 25-square-foot house. That seems to be somewhat in line with the, I mean, I know the land isn't as big, um, the, the lot's not as big, but a 2,500-square-foot house seems to be in line with your, with the neighborhood there, Chris, about most houses. I mean, there's a couple that are much bigger, but...
I would, I would agree with that.
He's not going to build a thousand-foot square-foot house. It's going to be one of these tiny homes in a house where there's much larger ones, so... What's that?
It'll be bigger.
Okay.
3,000 square foot home.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I think that, um, that is something that would be linked with the property. You know, the, the commission could put a stipulation of a minimum square footage of livable, for example, on the square, on the home that's being proposed. Um, perhaps that might help address some of the concerns of the neighbors, of property values, and, you know, what types of things are going to be built on that house, if they know that, hey, I'm guaranteed it's going to be at least 2,500 square foot of livable versus, you know, what's the bare minimum that the zoning allows. That perhaps could offer a measure of comfort to the neighbors that are there, that they're not getting the smallest lot and the smallest house, too.
Mr. Hall communicated 3,000 square foot livable. Would that be the size of that?
I'd be, I don't know where, I haven't, I just know it's going to be a version of my home, just a little bigger, blown up. I don't know exactly where that falls. My home is 2,600 square feet, a little bigger. Comfortable with you saying 2,500, and I think that's a great, a staff recommendation to throw in there. Neighbors feel comfortable, but guarantee it's going to be an asset to the community. It's going to bring less traffic, and it's going to be a great enhancement.
So 25 livable, Justin, is that, does that include the garage and porches and all that? Or is that, I, I just want to be clear, I don't want this to come back to us for clarification. I just want to make sure that...
Livable would be bedrooms, kitchen, closets, bathrooms. Does not include a garage, does not include any type of a porch or a deck.
And you've indicated there's going to be wraparound porches, that would not be included?
That would not be included in livable, no.
I, I would feel more comfortable voting in favor of that, if you want to amend your motion, Mr. Chairman.
Are there, before we amend the motion, uh, is there, uh, other than that, other than, other than the existing stack, staff recommendations and that, is there anything else that needs to be included in the amended motion?
And just to clarify, staff, we cannot make any, um, you know, we can't make any recommendations or stipulations on the existing project, on the, the building, the eyesore and the visual corridor that, that, you know, is of concern.
Like, I don't know what you mean by stip, I mean, there's lots of stipulations you could put on there, but your stipulation was to...
Either finish it or...
Finish, finish the house before that the zoning for the residential would take place, is it? is...
Correct. Or a building permit was issued, I mean, I guess.
Yeah, I don't think when you have a permitted commercial use, that you can put a stipulation on there that you have to finish the building before another, another residential use. I just, I don't know.
I, I, I would hope that Mr. Haltem would take what he has heard here this evening with respect to that, and deal with it appro, as appropriately and quickly as he could. So...
I wanna thank the graffiti artist for helping me out.
All right, then let me, do we need to, since we have a motion on the table, can we just amend it, or do we have to go back and...
We can amend it if the second alone agrees.
Okay. So, I move to approve, I move to recommend approval of Zoning Change Request 605-03-13, submitted by Bill Haltem from Creative Development LLC, to rezone a portion of APN 210-31-020K from C2 General Commercial to R1-15, which is single-family residential manufactured homes excluded, fifteen thousand square-foot lot, to allow for the construction of a single-family residence, subject to staff recommendations, in, including that the residential structure to be placed on this property will be a minimum of twenty-five hundred square feet livable, okay? And forward this recommendation to the City Council.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
If I could suggest wording on that amendment?
Yes.
The way that our code reads, it says, minimum dwelling size exclusive, exclusive of patios, porches, and garages, one thousand five hundred square feet. I would suggest if the commission is going to make an amendment to bump that up to twenty-five, that it just say, minimum dwelling size exclusive of patios, porches, and garages, two thousand five hundred feet. That way, we're, we're consistent with the way that our code says.
Okay.
And I think it becomes very clear that we're not including patios, porches, and garages.
Do I need to restate it, or is the clerk comfortable with, again? Okay, all right. So, we have the motion, Commissioner Adams agrees on the, on the amended motion, all right. So we now have a motion, motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. You, you may qualify your opposition if you choose.
No, I think I've stated my, my concern.
All right. All right. Motion is approved, excuse me?
Justin, have you on?
Oh, yep, I was getting to that. So, this has been scheduled for a public hearing with the City Council, at their next regularly-scheduled meeting, which will be held a week from tonight, at this same location, seven PM.
Thank you, all of you. All right. That being done, we will proceed with a call of the public, and that's where you guys can talk about anything else that you want, that might be in the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission, not affiliated with this specific issue. If nobody else out there is interested, then I'll dispense with the reading of the boilerplate.
I think Bruce is coming up, right?
I just wanna read, I just wanna ask the question again about the safety cord, you don't have a safety cord or anything, I mean, really, what do you mean? Do we recognize that we have a problem, we have one little wreck in the road?
Yeah. I don't think...
I would say to, if you have some issue, if, if you generally have concerns about the safety of the, the way, you should contact the City, the Public Works Director, who's Bill Cup, and he can work with the city engineer, and you can discuss your concerns with them. That's with City Council, if you come to them next week, you can bring those concerns, but they'll probably direct it back to staff, and have them, you know, meet with you and discuss your concerns of what you have, and what oppor, opportunities there are to address those concerns. So, you may wanna set up a meeting at City Hall with the, with Bill Cup.
Justin, would that be correct? Or is this it ultimately ended up with the, with the, you know, Arizona Highway?
During Call of the Public, we can't respond.
Right.
I can certainly, in my report, make some comments relative.
All right. Sir?
Say it from here.
Okay, come, yeah, yeah. So, I would apologize for the condition of the cabin as the way it stood, if we could get out there safely, without putting extension ladders in the snow, we'd have had it covered up before this meeting, I guarantee you. But, in the same stroke, I will tell you that, if you're unaware of it, that Creative Development, not too long ago, just before winter hit, took men and machine out into our pristine meadows and helped make them more pristine. We love the meadows, we love Sholo, we have vested interest in it, too. So we went out there and pulled all the cedar trees that were starting to overrun the meadows, and all the scrub oaks out, and along with the City Parks Department, and had them chipped up and, and cleaned up, so we had beautiful meadows again. So we are working to help, you know, sorry about that, we'll get that fixed, but we cleaned up the other side of the street, and we'll clean up this side, too. So, thank you very much.
Just another note.
Any further public comment? Okay, then we'll close that portion of the meeting, and we'll come back for summary of current events, and we'll begin with Commissioner Adams. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. We have approved the minutes to deal with from the previous meeting, all right. Let me, a long night.
I move to approve the minutes from the regularly-scheduled meeting on February twelve.
All right, we have a motion to approve, all right, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I make one.
You may.
The agenda says twenty eighteen, it should be twenty nineteen, so, just, I, my motion was to approve the minutes from February twelve, twenty nineteen, so...
All right. Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those minutes then are approved, and that goes to the summary of current events, Commissioner Adams.
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Barron?
I, again, commend the city crews for their excellent service this past week that we've dealt with. They did a great job, and kept as many people safe as possible.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Good. Nothing, nothing?
I concur that the city did a fantastic job with the snow removal, so, thank you to city staff.
Mr. Clark?
I don't have anything.
Vice Chair Robertson?
I'll throw them back. They did a fantastic job, and I'm very, very thankful for them being out there in the cold, taking care of business.
It, it's amazing, given the, you know, the level of staffing, and the size of the, the storm that we have come through this, as, as well as we have, so, I, I completely agree. Mr. Trigaskis?
Thank you, again, like to echo the appreciation for the snow efforts, our public safety officials, and our snowplow crews. The city has a number of crews, we were running those on twenty-four-hour, multiple days in a row, twelve-hour shifts. So you had crews that were working overnight, you had crews that were working all through the day, to help with that storm, and, and help get the roads in the condition that they did. Also like to thank our, our public safety, you know, obviously our police officers, fire, and ambulances, you know, that were able to take care of business throughout that storm as well. We do have a question, we have potential for a meeting on March twelfth. We understand that that is spring break, we need to just know from the commission if that is a conflict, and if we're gonna have a quorum available or not. So if you could just let us know. Also, on a personal note, today is my son's fifteenth birthday, seems kinda odd that my youngest is fifteen, makes me feel old.
You got ties older than you.
I've got one or two of those also. And then, also, just, you know, from time to time, we get questions related to the state highways that run through town. Who's responsible for them, who's responsible for the upkeep, who's responsible for the designation, who's responsible for determining when lights go in, when lights don't go in? All of our major roads through town, at the Dusa Clubs, White Mountain Road, Clark Road, those are all state highways, those are all run by ADOT. There are times when we have the ability to give some input on what they do, we can recommend and suggest projects to them, however, ultimately, it's their call as to what takes place. A good example, a project that we literally have been begging them to take care of for years and years and years, is the turn signal and turn lanes there on Cub Lake Road, Sholo Lake Road, and White Mountain Road. We think that we finally have been able to secure some funding with ADOT to help get that taken care of. Took some cooperation from the neighboring property owner where the proposed Circle K is, to dedicate some right-of-way, but we hope that that prod, problem area is going to be addressed. And when I say soon, when we're talking improvements to state highways, soon is not the lifespan of a fruit fly, it's like geologic time. And so, it may be several years, but we've at least got that on the, on the radar. We always recommend to our citizens, if they have concerns with either our city streets or with the state highways, please get in touch with our Public Works Department to discuss those concerns. That is one way that we then can make a recommendation to ADOT, that projects be included in those strategic plans, that you have to get your foot in the door, to then get funding, again, years later. So, certainly, anytime you have a question on road conditions, whether it be a pothole in a city street, or a concern with safety on the state highways that run through, just, you know, let us know. We can't make a decision, we can't make a recommendation in a vacuum. It helps our case when we go to ADOT, if we have some backing, if we can show them, look, these are comments that we've received, that helps move things further up the channel a, a little bit more quickly, so. Just kind of an update on the status of our roads, and, and how projects and things are taken care of here. So, that would conclude my report, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, sir. And with that, we will consider this meeting adjourned.